Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, March 28th Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilch and I am the Chair of the County Board. On my left, fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brinkman and Commissioner Deb Shore. On my right, Commissioner Oma Amundson and Vice Chair Commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us from the Lancaster County Attorney's Office is Mr. David Durbin from the County Clerk's Office, County Clerk Mr. Dan Nolte, and Kelly Lundgren, the Chief Administrative Officer from the County, Mr. Kerry Egan is also with us. If you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you'd please start the agenda.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all material to be discussed today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.na.gov. Agenda item one or minutes. One A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, March 21st, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, March 21st. Any corrections or discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners tour of the motor vehicle facility at 500 West O Street in Lincoln held on Tuesday, March 21st, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners tour of the motor vehicles facility on Tuesday, March 21st. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through March 28th, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through March 28th. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a special presentation. This is Good News Jail and Prison Ministries of Fairfax, Virginia Chaplain Program and Inmate Benefit Fund. Brad Johnson, Corrections Administrator, Brenda Fisher, Corrections Program Manager, and Sheldon Crapo, Chaplain.
Good morning.
Good morning. Brad Johnson, Director for Lancaster County Department of Corrections. Sheldon Crapo is here with us today. This is in regards to our chaplaincy program at the jail. We use Good News Jail and Prison Ministries to provide religious services, monitor the religious materials and texts that the inmates are given. A little background, we've used Good News since 1995. Actually Sheldon was the first chaplain with that program in our jail downtown. He acted in that role for approximately five years and then left to pursue another ministry. Then he returned again in 2011 and continues with our department. Sheldon oversees 50 religious volunteers for Bible study, church service, Catholic Mass, one-on-one discipleships, and so forth within the jail. The purpose for this morning is, his budget is all funded through donations within the community, which he works hard at trying to meet that budget. We're asking that the County Board allow us to donate $18,000 from our inmate benefit fund to help him continue with the help he does for us at the jail. I think Sheldon has some things he'd like to say.
Well, in years past, we've talked about various aspects of our work in the jail. One thing I'd highlight this year is the fact that we locate within the Lincoln community individuals who are willing to come in and work with inmates one-on-one, provide religious mentoring for inmates one-on-one. Right now, we're keeping active eight men and four women, which is an important part of helping an inmate work through his commitments to faith and so on. It's one thing to bring them into group services and studies, it's another thing to be able to sit down with them at an individual level and say, okay, where are you at? What do you need to be thinking about? And at this point, we've been able to bring into the jail facility these 12 individuals. Another thing that, another aspect of what we're doing that has been very meaningful, I believe, is there are two other men and one other woman who during the course of the week spend approximately 20 hours in the jail, providing according to their own unique backgrounds, such thing as religious counseling and contacting inmates and doing follow-up work. These are individuals that have very highly qualified backgrounds. The female volunteer has many years of experience in family services, social services in her background. One of the men, many years as a pastor and in educational ministries. The other individual, quite a bit of counseling background. These are individuals who are donating their time, as like I say, about 20 hours a week. Because there is a chaplaincy program, we're able to facilitate these types of things and provide inmates with these types of contacts. And so that's what we bring to you, to the county and to the county jail.
So Commissioner Shore?
And just for the record, Brad, would you please explain the funds that we're using for the inmate benefit fund? Just to clarify, this is not property tax dollars.
Correct. The inmate benefit fund is revenue that we collect through commissions that we get through inmate phone calls within the jail, the commissary items that they're allowed to purchase, we get a small commission off of that as well. Those are the two main revenue sources for this fund that we use for this type of, anything that really benefits the inmates, and this is one of those cases.
Commissioner Brinkman?
Mr. Crapo, so we talked about the volunteers that work with your program. What would the money in your budget be used for?
Well, the budget that supports the office of the chaplain is set right now at $75,700. Of course, the bulk of that is how Good News Jail and Prison Ministry supports me. But that's anything in terms of materials, office provisions, those sorts of things that keep, you know, what keeps an office running. That's what keeps our office running, providing Bible study materials and so on and so forth. That's how we maintain ourselves in the jail.
Commissioner Amundson?
Well, I think that this is a really worthwhile program. And you've been doing this for many, how many years have you been doing this?
Well, it depends on how you figure it, but we, five years from 1995 to 2000 and then since 2011, so we're going on 11 years.
Okay. Well, I would move approval.
Excuse me, this is, we're during our special presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. You're right.
Just one follow-up question. Mr. Crapo, do you know, obviously, that population changes a lot from day to day. Roughly, how many inmates do you provide services to on an average annual basis?
Well, I believe, did you bring those statistics with you? During the course of a year, as I recall, all of the combined attendance at services and Bible studies and so on runs between 6,000 and 7,000.
And these services range from anywhere from Alcohol Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous?
Okay. I am part of the Programs Department and those types of things work through the CS1s who are working with parenting and those types of things. I'm more along the strictly religious end of things, which would be providing Catholic, Buddhist, Asatru materials, most any type of religious request that comes in comes to me. So there's one of me and then the four of the rest of the Programs Department handling these types of requests.
But there, it's by Bible study, Catholic service on Sundays, the mentoring program, those type of actual religious services that occur.
Thanks for clarifying that. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next is number four, a public hearing. This is for a Class K liquor license application for Kramer Bar and Grill at 11365 West Kramer Street, Kramer, Nebraska.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the Class K liquor license application for Kramer Bar and Grill. Anyone here to speak in support of this?
Can I go ahead and swear you in here? Do you sound like a swearer from that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I'm Mike Roth, I'm the owner. I do a lot of special designated licenses during the spring, summer, fall, and usually I, you know, it costs me this amount of money to apply for the special designated license. So the catering license comes in, it saves me a little bit of money and then I don't have to go through the hoops all the time, so that's basically why I applied for it.
Are there any questions?
We've been there seven years now, this is the first year I've done it, I don't know why I should have done it before now, but. And then I do have one more question for you. Now, every year when I apply for it, do I have to come and meet with the board every single year to do this, or is there a different way we can go about doing it? Because don't I have to apply for it every year? I'm pretty sure I do. I think it's a hundred dollars a year.
I'm getting a head nod from the back of the room. Yes, you have to apply every year, but no, you don't have to come meet with the board.
Okay.
Yeah, come on up, Cory.
Cory BD Deputy County Clerk, once this application is approved, then every year when it renewals, it would just be part of the automatic renewal process, so, yeah.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else here to testify in support of this application? Anyone here to testify in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Okay, seeing none, we will carry this public hearing over for one week. So, thank you.
Next is number five, new business. Five A is authorize the payment of $18,000 from the inmate benefit fund to Good News Jail and Prison Ministries of Fairfax, Virginia, providing a full-time chaplain for Lancaster County Corrections inmates.
Now, I will move approval. Second.
We'll second again.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the payment of $18,000 from the inmate benefit fund for the Good News Jail and Prison Ministries. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilch?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a special events permit application from Gary Brethoff, Tiger Coaching and Personal Training, Inc., to hold the Last Blast Lincoln Triathlon on Sunday, September 17th, 2017.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Gary Brethoff, owner of Tiger Coaching and Personal Training.
Could you tell us a little bit about your event?
Yeah, this is the sixth year we've had this event. It's held out of Branched Oak Lake and it's held in the fall and we get approximately, we've ranged from 120 to 150 athletes. It's a swim, bike, run event. Work out there exclusively with the Parks Manager, Dave Kineman now, who's the new Park Manager last year, and work with him exclusively on the, using it out there. We swim there off Leavers Point and then we bike around the loop around the lake and then we run within Leavers Point there on the gravel and roads there. So we have a short triathlon, which is a little, short one that stays all within Leavers and then of course the long one then uses the bike route where we bike around the lake a couple of times and then stay with all within Leavers Point, so. And this is a fundraiser for the downtown YMCA Strong Kids Program, so.
Excellent. Are there any questions for the applicant?
How you doing?
Pretty good.
Move approval?
I think, I think we did have one thing I wanted to clarify on the insurance thing. We've done this for six years and we apply for insurance to USA Triathlon and they provide the insurance for our event, but I think there was a revision this year that USA Triathlon does not provide, so that'd be the only thing, so.
Right, right now, I think we are working through getting auto insurance as far as probably just gentleman's individual vehicle and that's the only vehicle that I understand will be involved in the event. Is that correct?
Yeah, we will have somebody out on the course, I mean, but basically they're out there on the bike route, so there'll be a couple. And then a friend of mine who's got a pickup will load and move stuff around, but basically once the event's going on, volunteers are in place, so there isn't much going on as far as vehicles on this thing, so.
So the Board has the discretion to waive the auto insurance. I'll just point out that for the past several years, I don't believe that we have requested auto insurance on this. This is where, we did ask the applicant to provide auto just based on the insurance requirements that are in force at this time.
Correct, yeah. We've recently revised our requirements for insurance for the special event permits and so I guess it's up to the Board whether or not we want to make that special permit issued with a waiver or make it subject to that obtaining of the auto insurance. Correct.
Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, just a quick question. How many people are usually at the triathlon?
As far as the participants?
Participants, yes.
Yeah, that ranges from about 120, 150. We park them in the parking areas in there before and then also we will, as it says here, we use the sheriffs at the major intersections around the lake and the entrance to Leavers Point also for traffic control, but about 120, 150 usually.
Okay. I actually would go ahead with the.
Want to go ahead?
Make a waiver on that with the auto insurance.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes, how many participants do you have in these events? How many athletes? 120?
That's 120 to 150, it's ranged in the past couple of years, yeah.
How old are they?
They're all, they're basically adults. In the supersprint, we set a restriction of 14, we have a couple that do that, but then most of them will run the age of, anymore you see triathlon running the age from 30 to 60, somewhere in there.
So it's adults, these are not kids running around?
No, this is not a kid's triathlon, right. This is not a kid's.
Like they get in the way of a car or a truck?
Yeah, no, this is an adult-based triathlon, right.
And I would second that motion.
Let's clarify. Commissioner Amundson, would you like to make that motion?
I would move that we go forward with this approval, including the waiver for the automobile insurance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the specials, special event permit application waiving the automobile insurance requirement for the Last Blast Lincoln Triathlon. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilch?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five C is an agreement with release and restored for job readiness, life skills classes for inmates at the Lancaster County Jail. The county will pay $1,180 for eight class program. Term of the contract is March 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2018.
Good morning. Brad Johnson, Director of Lancaster County Department of Corrections. It's time to renew the contract for our release and restored program. This is a program that helps folks incarcerated within our facility get ready to transition out. It helps them with, you know, resume writing and interview skills and those types of things that person needs in order to succeed on the outside. As you can see, there is a small bump up in the fee, 25 cents per student, but I guess I don't know if Brenda has anything she'd like to add to any of that?
Yeah, this represents a continuation of a service that Release and Restored has provided to us for a number of years. I was going to look back and see exactly when they started with us because honestly, I don't remember off the top of my head, but they began providing the program service before we moved into the new facility because prior to the move, we actually had them doing this programmatic work at our airpark facility with minimum security inmates. And that particular segment of our inmate population continues to be the focus of this program for the simple reason that these are individuals who are sentenced, who may be eligible to apply for work release, or who will very shortly be transitioning out of custody and back into the community and need to have marketable job-ready skills. So the work that they do is oriented, as Brad said, toward preparing them for how to interview for employment, how to create a resume, job searching strategies, how to sit down with a potential employer and be able to explain a criminal history. Their program also includes volunteers who come in to do mock interviews with the inmates so that they get some actual practical experience with that. And in the life skills portion, their curriculum focuses on teaching inmates based upon income how to prepare a personal budget, how to balance a checkbook, and sound financial savings and management principles. These are knowledge deficits for our inmates that occur at a much more, I guess, unexpected level than you might think. So they've been doing this work for a long time and we feel that the quality of the program benefits the inmates greatly. Those who complete the program also have a certificate and they can have a referral to give to their employer that references the Executive Director for Released and Restored.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, I do have one. I think this, again, this is an extremely worthwhile program. Have you done any follow-up studies to find out what the success ratio, success rate is?
You know, Brad and I were talking about this not too long ago because we've not done a lot of rigorous analysis of what programs we offer, how many inmates attend, and which of those inmates tend to successfully stay out of jail. And I think that's an area we need to move into so that we have some data to be able to show what the impact of the program is.
And again, this is coming out of the inmate benefit fund, so it's not tax dollars, but it's.
That was going to be my question, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for clarifying that. Are there any other questions for Mr. Johnson or Ms. Fisher?
Move approval?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve an agreement with Release and Restored for Job Readiness and Life Skills Classes for Inmates at the Lancaster County Jail. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilch?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five D is an agreement, or agreements between Steve McClatchy and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Election Commissioner for the delivery of voting machines and other miscellaneous equipment at several polling locations for primary election to be held on Tuesday, April 4th, 2017, and the general election to be held on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017. The county will pay $58 per polling location for the delivery services.
Morning, Mr. Shively.
Hi, the, this, these agreements are with Mr. McClatchy to deliver our automarks, which are the machines that assist voters with disabilities. That's the main thing. They also deliver polling location or tables and chairs to a few locations that we don't have, that they didn't have sufficient in numbers. So these are billable costs for the election, so we will bill, the city, airport authority and school district will reimburse us for these costs after we complete the election, so. But we have to have those by state and federal law to have the automarks at each location, so it's one of those things that we have to deliver, they're about 70 pounds apiece, so it's not something that our poll workers can easily get back and forth.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions for Mr. Shively?
Where are the automarks being, automarks being stored now? Is this the first election cycle that we're working from the different location?
Yeah, they're being stored over, over here at the Records Management Building. Yeah, on the third floor, I believe. After the November election, we had them stored on the third floor, fourth floor, third floor of the Health Department. Then they delivered them back, when they, when we were done, they delivered them over there, so we didn't have to move them twice, basically, so.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Remove approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Steve McClatchy for the delivery of voting machines and other miscellaneous equipment for several polling locations for the primary and general elections for the city of Lincoln. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilch?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. He is a visitor's improvement fund grant contract in amount of $500,000 with the Lincoln Parks Foundation. For renovation of the Centennial Mall, the grant period is January 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2017.
Commissioner Avery?
I would just like to point out that this was very vital money for the program to renovate and to revitalize the Centennial Mall. And it was critical to the success of that program and I intend to vote for it.
I guess, Mr. Kerry, do you have anything to add? Mr. Egan, sorry?
Not really. I mean, this contract is a little late in the game, but we were involved back in 2011. Parks and Recreation came to us and wanting this guarantee of money to help them in their fundraising. Our money was dependent upon them raising a certain amount for the project, which they did easily, and they pointed to the contribution from the county as one of the factors that made the fundraising easier. So we played an integral role in this and we're just now getting around to the contract. They need their money and they realized they had to have a contract, so they always come back.
Commissioner Avery?
Would you agree with me that this jump started the fundraising?
Oh, absolutely. This was a key piece right from the beginning in the fundraising. So the visitors' improvement fund and the philosophy of that program really proved its worth in this case, was very important in the fundraising.
Any other questions for Mr. Egan? I would entertain a motion.
Move, go ahead. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with the Lincoln Parks Foundation for the renovation of the Centennial Mall. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilch?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is renewal of an agreement with the Journal Star Printing Company for advertising for the Election Commissioner. Term of the agreement is March 1st, 2017 through February 28th, 2018.
Morning again, Mr. Shively.
This is just an agreement for when we publish the sample ballot notice of election and absentee requests that we're all required to do by state law before elections. It gives us a little bit discounted rate to have this agreement and it's an annual thing that we go through with, with the Journal Star.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to renew the agreement with Lincoln, I'm sorry, with Journal Star Printing for advertising for the Election Commissioner. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilch?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is re-credentialed documents for Optimum for Medicaid Participation at the Meno Health Crisis Center.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the re-credentialed documents for Optimum, Optum for Medicaid Participation. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilch?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is an agreement between BMI Imaging Systems, Inc. and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Assessor for Image Conversion and Hosting. The cost to county is $9,750. The cost covers hosting through August 31st, 2018.
Good morning, Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Registered Deeds. This is an item that we discussed at staff meeting. discussed at staff meeting a while back to upgrade the software that customers utilize to access, uh, older images from the Registered Deeds system, makes them available to anyone online. Uh, this is enhancement to that software to make it more user-friendly, more modern with some of the web technology available now. In addition, they, this company will now host the service for us. Uh, it's important to note the hosting service switch will save us about six thousand dollars a year as opposed to it being hosted locally here now.
Q, any questions for Mr. Gaines?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the agreement with BMI Imaging Systems for image conversions and hostings for the county assessor's office. Any, um, discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five I is professional services contract with JEO Consulting Group for professional engineering services for the preparation of scour mitigation plans for County Bridge H one nineteen. Work is to be completed on or before July, July eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. The cost to county is twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Good morning, Ms. Dingman.
Good morning. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Uh, Bridge H one nineteen is located on one hundred and seventy-sixth Street, just north of, of, um, Bluff Road, adjacent to Camp Creek. This is the, uh, I'll call it the younger sister to the, the Northern Bridge, H one nineteen, which is the trust bridge, of course, that we bought at auction in nineteen thirty-two. Um, what is critical about the two bridges on this stretch is they are both scour critical. And, um, of course, the Northern Bridge is now closed, and we know that we desperately need to repair the Southern Bridge. So, we are gonna repair the Northern Bridge first so that we can close the Southern Bridge and repair it second. Um, should we get in a situation where both bridges have to be closed, it will isolate two families from their homes. So, um, I have the map where I show the, um, location of it in regards to all of Lancaster County. Here's a more detailed map showing the crossing of Camp Creek, um, which is, it really winds through this mile. Um, it crosses the road twice, and it, it is, um, it is very wide, and it has gotten very deep with the storms that we've had in the last couple of years. Um, I note that Peggy Brown, an adjacent landowner, is in the crowd, and Peggy has told me that, um, that when she was younger, uh, her family used to take cattle across this creek, and obviously, it's not anything that you can cross with cattle at this time, so that just shows us the degradation of this creek over time.
Thank you. And any questions from Ms. Dingman? I guess the one question I would have is, as far as the timeframe goes, I know these two bridges, as you indicated, would benefit the property owners, especially those families that are directly affected, affected as well as the farmers in the area.
So, uh, several weeks ago, you approved the engineering contract for the Northern Bridge. Uh, we will meet with that consultant next week. They have done their hydraulics and hydrology study, uh, of the water surface profiles for this area and what the velocities are through the creek so that we could determine the depth of scour so that we could recommend a solution at the abutments of this bridge. And so, we are nearly done with the engineering study. The goal is to be able to get, uh, a solution out to bid, um, before the end of the budget year, but we wanted to go ahead and start on the engineering study of this bridge so that, um, this bridge could be fixed later this fall.
Perfect. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the professional service contract with JEO Consulting Group for the professionally engineering services for the preparation of scour mitigation plans for County Bridge H one nineteen. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is a contract between Infrastructure LLC and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Engineer for Professional Engineering Services for preparation of redecking plans for Bridge N one thirty-eight. The cost to county is eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Work is to be completed on or before May twenty-fifth, or excuse me, May fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, Bridge N one thirty-eight is located on West Denton Road, um, as shown on my map, just outside, uh, just east of, um, the village of Denton. And here is a, a little closer picture of Bridge N one thirty-eight. So, hey, good news. N one thirty-eight is not a scour critical bridge. Um, it's actually in very good shape except for the deck. The surface of the bridge is, is worn out, and we've patched it and repatched it, and it, it just simply is falling apart. So, we studied this bridge, and we really determined that in the case of this bridge, we don't need bridge replacement or scour mitigation. We just need to redeck the bridge. So, this is a contract to design the redecking of this bridge, replace the surface of the bridge, and we think this bridge will be able to last another fifty, seventy-five years.
Commissioner Avery?
Pam, what, what kind of services are you getting for the money we're spending on the preparation of these bridges?
Well, it depends on the contract. In, um, in the case of this contract, what the structural engineer will be doing is redesigning, uh, designing a plan to remove the decking safely so that we can still use the substructure, um, and the abutments of this bridge, and then redesigning the structure of this bridge.
The structure?
The, the deck structure, the top of the bridge, is what we're replacing. So, these are engineering services for that design.
And you require this, or you need this for every bridge that we repair?
Every bridge in itself is unique as to what we're recommending for it. In the case of this bridge, in order to stabilize this bridge, we need to replace the deck of this bridge.
Are there any other questions from Stingman?
I move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the contract with infrastructure for professional engineering services for preparation of redecking plans for Bridge N one thirty-eight. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five K is a recommendation from the purchasing department and emergency management to order contract to Schmader Electric Construction, Inc. for an outdoor warning siren. The cost to county is twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Good morning. Jim David, Saver, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. The only information I wanted to add to this is that the siren will be placed at the Lancaster Event Center. Um, it was currently, or the Lancaster Event Center is currently on the fringe of our, uh, existing siren network, and with the growth and development and the number of activities that they have at the event center, we had it on our radar as far as, uh, an excellent, uh, location for our next siren. So, uh, it just worked out this year that that was the, the best place for it. So, as soon as the purchase is approved, we will go ahead with that installation, and we should be ahead of the curve as far as the severe weather season that we're just rolling into.
Commissioner Amundson?
It's an excellent place for it, with the number of people who go there and everything. Glad that it's going there.
Sure, and I'd like to commend Deputy Director Mark Hosking. He's been working with Amy and her staff out there at the event center just to ensure that all their plans are up to, uh, speed with, uh, what the expectations are, because you're right, not only are they frequently having events out there, the, the crowd numbers, the, the bodies that they have out there is significant. So, we want to make sure it's a safe environment as possible for everyone.
Commissioner Avery?
What is the range of the sirens?
Up to a mile. It depends on the geography and the topography, and that's the other thing. Some of our existing sirens are just south of the event center, but the old railroad right away that runs through there, just on the east side, kinda limits the effective range. So, that's the other thing, too, that, uh, we have two different lengths of, uh, the poles, a fifty-foot pole or a fifty-five-foot pole, and by increasing that height an additional five feet, it can significantly improve our coverage area. So, those are things that we factor into the decision-making process, not only exactly where to put the siren, but the height of the pole that we should use that will give us the maximum coverage.
Any other questions for Mr. David Saver?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the contract with Schmader Electric Construction for an outdoor warning siren. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is a recommendation from the purchasing department and the sheriff's office to order purchase order for two twenty-seventeen Ford midsize utility vehicles off the State of Nebraska contract one four six one one, um, zero, or OC. The cost of each vehicle is twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. One vehicle will be purchased using general funds, and one will be purchased using forfeited asset funds.
Come up, Mr. Wagner.
Good morning. Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. You may remember last Thursday we talked about one of these vehicles, which is a replacement for a vehicle that was totaled out in a crash. Um, we're still, Sue Eckley's still working with the insurance carrier. The money will come out of our budget to purchase that vehicle, but then be reimbursed by, to some degree, by the, uh, by the insurance carrier for the other vehicle. Um, the second vehicle here is being purchased with forfeited assets, as we've talked about, uh, for that new position that was also funded, uh, through forfeited assets, uh, several weeks ago. So, that's the, that's the, these two vehicles are accounting for.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to, um, purchase two Ford police midsize utility vehicles. Um, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is a contract with Encompass to provide the, the annual supply of office seating. The cost to the county is not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the contract with Encompass to provide annual supply of office seating. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is a contract with your next hire to provide the annual service inspection and repair of vehicle lifts. Term of the contract is one year from the date of execution. The cost to county is not to exceed eight hundred dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to amend the county contract with Wesco Distribution for the supply and, uh, delivery of electrical supplies. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
I'm sorry, I was on the wrong, uh, budget item. Sorry, we have a motion, a second to approve the contract with your next hire, um, to provide the annual service inspection and repair of vehicle lifts. Please call the roll on agenda item number N.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
My apologies. Now, on to item O.
This is amendment to county contract C dash thirteen, eight, dash two-one-eight with Wesco Distribution, Inc. using State of Nebraska contract number one three four seven eight, um, OC to supply and deliver electoral supplies. The amendment renews the contract from March fifth, two thousand and seventeen through, through March fourth, two thousand and eighteen. The cost to county is not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, now we have a motion, a second to amend the county contract with Wesco Distribution to supply and deliver electrical supplies.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Second. Shore.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is an amendment to county contract C dash ten, dash five oh nine with Bob Barker Company, Inc. for the annual supply of corrections staff clothing, inmate clothing and accessories. The amendment extends the contract from April sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen through June fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. The cost to county is not to exceed nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion, a second to approve the amendment to the county contract with Bob Barker Company for the annual supply of corrections staff clothing, inmate clothing and accessories. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is an amendment to county contract C dash fifteen, dash four oh seven with NMC, Inc. for the annual supply of Caterpillar filler, filters. The cost for the products will be increased by two thousand dollars for remainder of the contract term with a revised total amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the amendment to county contract with NMC, Inc. for the annual supply of Caterpillar filters. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five R is an amendment to county contract C dash fifteen, dash one eighty-six with Safety Clean Systems, Inc.'s for the annual requirements of parts washer services and recycling solvent. The amendment renews the contract from April fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen through April thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The cost to county is not to exceed one thousand and five hundred dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the county contract amendment with Safety Clean Systems for the annual requirements of parts washer services and recycling solvent. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. S is an amendment to county contract C dash fifteen, dash ninety-five with Nico Security for the annual requirements of fire alarm and security monitoring services. The amendment renews the contract from March tenth, two thousand and seventeen through March ninth, two thousand and eighteen. The cost to county is not to exceed two thousand dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the amendment to the county contract with Nico Security for the annual requirements of fire alarm and security monitoring services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number six is a consent item. Receive and place on file the following report for February two thousand and seventeen, and it's for the sheriff's office.
Move approval of the consent item?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the consent item. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.[1659.01]